There you go.
Bye, I'm here.
Uh, pay off with our plus stuff.
Yeah. Huh?
Say, can't move in.
Yeah? Nope.
No.
Couldn't stay away.
Thought you might miss Alan, so it makes sense.
I know. You never know.
I was gonna call you last week and see if you need some of the driving.
Yep.
That would've been a tough job.
That would've been alright.
I feel a little low.
Yeah?
Yeah, I went down more.
Yeah, we have to get out of here, I already found that out.
Yeah.
Thank you. I do work here, I should know things like that. Give me just a minute.
You're fine.
Better wake up, it's gonna be a long one. There it is. Oh, no.
They're all.
Thank you, no.
Is it thank you or no?
No, somebody named Cozad.
Oh.
Do what? Cozad, what'd he say?
It was nice, it's a thank you note.
Oh! Good.
I thought they moved away, isn't that Janice Cozad's office?
No.
It's not, okay, must be somebody else.
Hey, Sandy. Sandy, isn't it too late to ask people if you see me?
I already said you were gonna know.
Oh, good.
I already told you.
I did.
She read your mind.
I didn't, I didn't give you the seat, so I followed you. You're in.
Perfect, thank you.
Hey, and by the way, I'm trying to not remember.
You doing a tour?
I don't know.
Yeah, it's been renewed. We do that through the chain.
Yeah.
Public affairs, because it's gonna be expired in September.
I suppose it'd be fun to be on the other side of it.
Look at it, because we may need.
I'd rather do it before we go down.
I'll take a look at it.
Every time I get scheduled to be doing something, something happens. For like fifteen years, something has happened.
No, last year I was. The last three years, not this year.
Any of the other one?
No real stuff.
Yeah, I was the videographer when I got this one in the A-ten simulator when we first got it. It was pretty cool.
Was it cool?
Yeah. Digging it.
Yeah, it is.
Alright. Alright, well. It's after seven, so I'm running late, let's get started.
Lund.
Here.
Johnston.
Here.
Watts.
Here.
Allen.
Here.
Jacob.
Here. Alright, so you approval of the minutes?
Approval of the minutes? No different.
Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacob.
Yes. That's absolutely jumped in.
Move to adopt.
Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacob.
Yes. Alright, let's start the public hearings with, we got a public hearing on an ordinance fixing the annual rate of levy for taxes by the city of Warrensburg County of Johnson, Missouri for general revenue fund purposes for the year 2017 and levying said taxes. Alright, looks like they got you on the hook to raise taxes.
Well, this, uh, actually, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, this, uh, first ordinance is for the general fund revenues. This levy has not been raised at all, this is the same as last year. We are expecting, uh, a levy of seven hundred eighty-five thousand dollars for property tax.
Does anybody sign up back there? Because it's pretty quiet, we don't raise them, so.
It's the very first one, you're on the, yeah, on the left.
No one for that one.
No one for that one, alright. Council have anything on that one? Alright. Alright, we'll move to close that one. The second one is a public hearing on an ordinance fixing the annual rate of levy for taxes by the city of Warrensburg County of Johnson, Missouri for park fund purposes for the year 2017 and levying said taxes.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the park levy, uh, as well as the general fund levy, had saw no increases this year, so it will be the same as it was for, uh, 2016, basically, uh, point one nine six, and we're expecting four hundred twenty-six thousand dollars for the park fund levy.
Alright. Nobody signed up for that one either? Council have anything on that one?
Nope.
Alright, we'll close that one. Third one is a public hearing on an ordinance fixing the annual rate of levy for taxes by the city of Warrensburg County of Johnson, Missouri, for debt services purposes for the year 2017 and levying said taxes.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, uh, the debt service levy is the levy that, uh, we wrote, well, it's the levy that will pay for the, uh, bonds that we, that were voted on in April and passed. The levy will be set at point five nine, uh, per hundred dollar valuation. We expect that, uh, it will bring in around a million dollars, and that is more than enough to pay for the first year's debt. And as, and as you guys, uh, want it, it will be levied on real property only. So, personal property, uh, taxes will not go up, it'll only be the real property, which will be houses and buildings and things of that sort.
Anybody sign up for that one? Nope. Alright. Council have anything on that one? We'll close that one. Number four, the public hearing on an ordinance establishing a general business district for property recently annexed into the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, located on the west side of HH Highway.
Mayor, I know we will take each hearing as they come, uh, generally my comments for this first one would apply to the next three as well, all of them dealing with generally the same area of the city of Warrensburg. But this is a hearing for zoning property that at the last meeting you contemplated annexing in. So at the last meeting on, um, August fourteenth, you held hearings regarding annexing in four tracts of land. Uh, one is a small triangle on the west side of HH Highway, the other is, is the HH right of way itself, um, south of thirteen until it intersects with the highway fifty right of way. And the fourth, um, the third tract, what is called Track Four, is on the north side of Veterans, between HH and Highway thirteen. And the final, the fourth track, later Track Five, is on the south side of Veterans Road between HH and Highway thirteen. So, each of those, uh, if successfully annexed, have in, uh, requested those different owners, there's two different owners there, Brady Commerce Park in Johnson County, Missouri, the commissioners, have requested that that land be established for general business district, each of the four tracts is general business. They, um, if you look, that is consistent with the plans that the city has had for the last ten years, starting with the comprehensive city plan in two thousand and seven, and again, here in two thousand and seventeen, when we recently updated the comprehensive city plan, this area was shown as community commercial or commercial in the twen- into the two thousand and seven future land use plans. So, uh, it has been, uh, shown that way on the plans for a number of years. Additionally, it is currently adjacent to general business district that is already established, you have in your packet, a copy of a map that looks similar to this, should look like this. Um, and that shows that there on the eastern edge of the Cahill subdivision, those developers originally left two large, uh, they're, they're called blocks, um, but lots on the north and south side of Veterans Road there at the entrance. And so, those two large lots that are part of the Cahill subdivision have been zoned general business since that land came into the city of Warrensburg, and that happened at that time, uh, in the mid-two thousands, because it was shown that way on our plans at the time, and was, uh, was the developers had interest in at that time as well. So, it is, uh, an extension of that district that these four pieces would be, uh, requested, and staff has supported the zoning of them as general business. So, we have received a few comments from the public specific to the zoning, those are, uh, listed in your packet, they were received in time to get them in the packet and in the writing of the packet. So, if you have any additional questions, staff would recommend, uh, rezoning, uh, for the reasons stated in the ordinance. And as well, the planning and zoning commission recommended approval at their meeting on August third, I believe, did they mean? August seventh. Be happy to answer any questions. As well, um, I think there is a representative of the owner, Brady Commerce Park, for this tract, if you have any questions.
He did sign up to speak, did you wanna say anything, Mark?
Just, just, you think, Mr. Brady couldn't be here tonight because of conflicts, we asked you to appear on his behalf. On behalf of the owner of the tract one, three, and four, he requests the council to approve the general business zoning, because it is adjacent to the general business, so I'm going to do this now. I'll be happy to respond if you have any particular questions, I'm totally informed about all the prior histories, but I did meet with Mr. Brady this afternoon, and he gave me a little back. There's no questions, I won't take more of your time, thank you. And these apply to all three of the, the four, five, and six, which is, are four, six, and seven, which Mr. Brady, Brady comments on. Thank you.
Thank you. Does my person sign up to speak?
Barbie, you said there are comments in here?
Sure, comments, uh, from the second page, under public notice, Michelle Engler met with staff on August twenty-fourth, uh, discussed general information. Adam Buchanan called on August twenty-fourth to find out what the rezoning signs were about. He was just seeking an understanding, he didn't stay for or against.
Just basically asking for.
Sure.
Anybody got anything else? We'll move to close that one. Number five is a public hearing on an ordinance establishing a general business district for property recently annexed into the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, known as the right of way for HH Highway between Highway fifty and Highway thirteen.
This is the right of way that the county owns, um, and they do own that by deed, and so, have applied to have it, uh, rezoned, established as a general business. Any questions specific to it, if you have them? P and Z recommended approval of this one as well.
Nobody signed up to speak? Council got any questions? Alright, we'll move to close that one. Number six is a public hearing on an ordinance establishing a general business district for property recently annexed into the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, located north of Veterans Road between Highway thirteen and HH Highway. Did you want to add anything to that one?
Not mentioning to add, the planning and zoning recommended approval of this as general business as well.
And we did have a, okay. Did you wanna add anything to that, okay? Same person signed up and spoke on them all, so, there we go. Council got anything on that one? Alright, we'll close that one. And then number seven is a public hearing on an ordinance establishing a general business district for property recently annexed into the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, located south of Veterans Road between Highway thirteen and HH Highway and north of Highway fifty. Did you want anything to it before?
The planning commission recommended approval of this for general business as well.
Alright. And it looks like, um, Mike also, Mike signed up, he said what he was gonna say, Lindsey Chapman?
I just picked one of the sheets.
Okay, that's fine.
So, I'm a resident in the area, I just had a couple of questions that I think will be included, but I didn't see in any of the documentation. I just wanted to clarify, is this, um, being rezoned, or is it that it was annexed and it's currently not zoned as anything?
Correct.
The county doesn't have any zoning, so once it's annexed to the city, it then has to be zoned to something.
So it's annexed without any zoning, like?
Yeah, the county doesn't, yeah.
Okay, and then I was wondering if there's any significance to the word district being used in all of this?
No.
As far as what type of businesses can go in?
Every zoning category is referred to as a district, uh, so that does not apply any type of particular development scheme, that's just a term of art in the zoning code that each zoning classification is described as being within a district.
It doesn't imply that the entire area will be used for one purpose, or anything, anything that fits under the general commercial?
Yeah, there are, in the table of uses, there are a variety of different activities that are permitted in each zoning district. And so, there's, there's no scheme imposed by the city other than the requirements of the zone ordinance.
Thank you.
Council have anything you wanna add to it? Alright. Let's see here. That moves, that closes all the public hearings?
Thank you.
So we got one resolution, it's a resolution of the city council for the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, supporting the efforts of Belmont Development Company, LLC, to develop Hawthorne Lot Seven.
Yeah, so we have a developer who is interested in doing, uh, a tax credit housing project on Lot Seven in Hawthorne, and as part of the application is requesting a resolution of support to be included with their application, as part of the process. And so, that has been prepared for you, the developer is here today, I don't know if he wants to say anything, or if you have any questions beforehand about the project.
Did you wanna, did you wanna say anything at all, or?
I'll be glad to address any, you know, any questions that the council may have, but due to my, you know, trying to get over pneumonia, I won't speak any more than I just have to, but, uh, you know, I'm glad to be here, thank you folks for allowing me to be, be here if you have any questions. I'd be more than glad to address those.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? I think we're good. Alright.
Thank you.
Move to approve?
Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacob.
Yes. Alright, ordinance is first reading only. Public.
Yeah, you just say public.
Okay, public comment on the fiscal year eighteen proposed annual budget, and ordinance adopting the annual operating budget for the fiscal year beginning October one, two thousand and seventeen, for the city of Warrensburg, Missouri.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, uh, what you have in your packet is, uh, basically the, the same, uh, budget that was presented at last week, or, at the council, at our last council meeting. The only changes in the budget so far are that now we have the wording, uh, the history and different things like that in the budget, the numbers, uh, did not change, well, there was a slight change in the number, and it had to do with, uh, a piece of equipment that we were able to fit in this year, and so we took it out in next year, so the bottom line changed just a bit. So, we're looking at beginning the year with a balance of one million five seventy-three above the required reserve, and we'll spend that reserve down six hundred and thirty-seven thousand and end the year at nine, nine hundred thirty-six thousand above the required reserve. If there are any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. If not, staff will recommend that we pass it to, or, we'll read it for the first time this time, and then second time, uh, in two weeks, maybe.
Is ready? Anybody sign up for this public comment? Nope. Alright. Did council have any questions or anything on? Number ten is an ordinance establishing sewer rate volume charges for the fiscal year eighteen budget here in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, at our last council meeting, we discussed three, uh, options for raising the sewer rates, uh, to accommodate the expenses that we have. Uh, the first one is the variable rate increase, which would, uh, raise the variable rates from two seventy for volume charge A, and five eleven for volume charge B, to, uh, two seventy-two and five sixty respectively. The second option is a fixed charge increase, uh, that is, that is what we, we spoke about it, and was presented as a second option last time, and it would put the, uh, fixed portion of the bill to seven dollars and fifty cents, up from nine dollars. And the third option is to basically part out, uh, both a fixed charge for volumes under, under two cubic feet, stay at the nine dollars, and anything over to be twelve dollars per month. Staff has, has went over this with the city manager, and we, we see, we think that the fixed increase across the board is what we were recommending.
So, option B?
Option B, yes.
I was reading on section three, it says, for single family or duplex dwelling units not having a water meter. Is there such a thing out there for a single family or duplex to not have a water meter?
Well, I think that would be more than you would do.
It is, I know, it says for single family or duplex dwelling units not having a water meter. The current average would be blah, blah, blah.
Yes, we still have some that are on, on wells.
Right.
In the city limits, okay, okay, was not aware of that.
There are some, um, rural water district customers, but I believe we're receiving building information from those as well, so it would be when there's a private water source.
It just kinda caught my eye, sorry.
There's not a lot, but it, it does exist in a handful of locations.
I think it, that came about originally when we didn't have that established, when we found people that were connected to the sewer system, and they worked, they didn't have a meter.
I know of one or two that are on the eastern boundary of town that have that situation.
Thank you.
What was the primary reason that the staff was recommending option B?
The primary reason was because, so last year we did the variable rate, uh, charge, and the variable rate did not, uh, yield the, the revenue that we thought that it would yield, uh, because basically the, the, uh, the people, the customers of the sewer utility, uh, stopped using as much water, which brought the variable rate down, and we didn't collect as many as, uh, much funds as we thought we would. Changing the fixed portion of it basically would increase to where, the level of, oh, I'm sorry, the level of revenue that we would need to fund the, the camp.
And you think option C, like psychologically, people would still just choose to use less water?
C, no, it's not that, uh, the, it's, it's more, it has to do more with our equipment and being able to, uh, split both of those up, it would, it would cost around, I think it was around eight thousand dollars for us to get the in-code upgraded to the right sort of equipment where we could break those two charges out.
So that's kind of the difference between the two, because you can see your numbers on C is more fixed charge, and then you've got the fixed nine, where you've got eleven fifty, and then you've got the twelve.
Yeah, how long would it take to get to that, to pay back eight thousand dollars?
So it's basically, so, the, it's gonna cost the city eight thousand dollars if you're the policy fee.
Yes.
I also personally have some concerns, my understanding is recently your rates used to be separated out with different charges for different demographics, and then you cleaned all that up and went to one rate. Now, if we move forward with this, we're regressing back to that, and our preference is to keep it all clean and keep everybody the same.
We used to have a five dollar charge, and anything over the two cubic feet, pay, uh, more.
Well, when H, uh, HDR briefed us the last, the last time on this, in fact, uh, their input was to continue to monitor, uh, those rates, because the usage would not pay for the system.
Yes, and, and that, that was basically with the, with volume charge, with the variable charge. With fixed rate, we think we'll fix that this year, but next year we will probably, uh, go back to recommending changing the volume charge.
Okay.
You don't wanna fit, you don't wanna change the fixed rate too many times, because then you get a disproportionate share of money, and we will be actually making money rather than breaking it, and so, we don't wanna do this to see.
And it provides more predictability, having, changing the fixed rate charge where there's a lot of trends that are changing drastically, and, um, the only way to kind of make sure that we can pay the bills and, and have the money to keep the infrastructure in place.
Level billing.
Yeah.
Well, then I would have to go if you, if you kinda told me on C it costs eight thousand dollars, I actually said I'll take a vote for that, so.
I personally like B, because.
I agree, I like B.
Yep.
Alright, so our recommendation to staff is B. Alright, ordinance is going to second reading. An ordinance annexing certain adjacent territories into the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, located on the west side of HH Highway.
Again, this item and the next three are all related to annexing those four tracts of land we discussed earlier. I would say since your annexation hearings, I did receive one inquiry from the public, um, that was specific to the annexation, and that was from Gilbert Powers. He came to City Hall and requested the information that was in the last council packet, so we emailed back to him. I have not heard anything back since that email went out. And then, uh, the conversation with Michelle Engler that staff had on August twenty-fourth was general enough that it also discussed the annexation. I'd also note that in your packet, on this item eleven, there are actually, at least in the electronic one, there were two ordinances, and the first one references, uh, the, the roundabout right of way, the Holden Street Northwest twenty-one. That is an errant ordinance, you don't want that in there.
Yeah.
So, it is the one for the west side of HH Highway that we need to consider at this point for second reading.
Questions, discussions?
Move to adopt.
Lund?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
Number twelve, an ordinance annexing certain adjacent territories into the city of Warrensburg, Missouri known as right-of-way for HH Highway between Highway Fifty and Highway Thirteen.
Lund?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
An ordinance annexing certain adjacent territories into the city of Warrensburg, Missouri located north of Veterans Road between Highway Thirteen and HH Highway. Move to approve said ordinance.
Lund?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
And fourteen, an ordinance annexing certain adjacent territories into the city of Warrensburg, Missouri located south of Veterans Road between Highway Thirteen and HH Highway and north of Highway Fifty.
Move to adopt.
Lund?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
Alright, ordinance is first and second reading. Number fifteen, is an ordinance establishing a general business district for property recently annexed into the city of Warrensburg, Missouri located on the west side of HH Highway.
Move said bill to pass second reading by title.
Lund?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
This is an ordinance establishing a GB, General Business District for property recently annexed into the city of Warrensburg, Missouri located on the west side of HH Highway. This is for adoption or rejection. Lund?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
Sixteen, ordinance establishing a GB General Business District for property recently annexed into the city of Warrensburg, Missouri known as right-of-way for HH Highway between Highway Fifty and Highway Thirteen. Move to pass said ordinance to second reading by title?
Lund?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
This is an ordinance establishing a GB General Business District for property recently annexed into the city of Warrensburg, Missouri known as right-of-way for HH Highway between Highway Fifty and Highway Thirteen. This is for adoption or rejection. Lund?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
Number seventeen, an ordinance establishing a GB General Business District for property recently annexed into the city of Warrensburg, Missouri located north of Veterans Road between Highway Thirteen and HH Highway.
Move said bill be passed the second reading by title.
Lund?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
This is an ordinance establishing a GB General Business District for property recently annexed into the city of Warrensburg, Missouri located north of Veterans Road between Highway Thirteen and HH Highway. This is for adoption or rejection. Lund?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
Number eighteen, an ordinance establishing a GB General Business District for property recently annexed into the city of Warrensburg, Missouri located south of Veterans Road between Highway Thirteen and HH Highway and north of Highway Fifty.
Move said bill be passed the second reading by title.
Lund?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
This is an ordinance establishing a GB General Business District for property recently annexed into the city of Warrensburg, Missouri located south of Veterans Road between Highway Thirteen and HH Highway and north of Highway Fifty. This is for adoption or rejection. Lund?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
Nineteen, an ordinance fixing the annual rate of levy for taxes to the city of Warrensburg, County of Johnson, Missouri for general revenue fund purposes for the year two thousand seventeen and levying said taxes.
Move said bill be passed the second reading by title.
Lund?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
This is an ordinance fixing the annual rate of levy for taxes by the city of Warrensburg, County of Johnson, Missouri for general revenue fund purposes for the year two thousand seventeen and levying said taxes. This is for adoption or rejection. Lund?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
An ordinance fixing the annual rate of levy for taxes by the city of Warrensburg, County of Johnson, Missouri for park fund purposes for the year two thousand seventeen and levying said taxes.
Move said bill be passed second reading by title.
Lund?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
This is an ordinance fixing the annual rate of levy for taxes by the city of Warrensburg, County of Johnson, Missouri for park fund purposes for the year two thousand seventeen and levying said taxes. This is for adoption or rejection. Lund?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
Twenty-one, ordinance fixing the annual rate of levy for taxes by the city of Warrensburg, County of Johnson, Missouri for debt servicing purposes for the year two thousand seventeen and levying said taxes.
Move that said bill be passed the second reading by title.
Lund?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
This is an ordinance fixing the annual rate of levy for taxes by the city of Warrensburg, County of Johnson, Missouri for debt service purposes for the year two thousand seventeen and levying said taxes. This is for adoption or rejection. Lund?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
Twenty-two, an ordinance accepting dedication of certain public easements from Brady, from Brady Commerce Park LLC in Warrensburg, Missouri.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that's the dedication of the easements for the roadway for Hi, Veterans Road Phase Two into the Commerce Park area, for both roadway area and the roundabout cul-de-sac. So, the easements that are required for that, staff recommends approval as presented.
Move said bill be passed the second reading by title.
Lund?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
This is an ordinance accepting dedication of certain public easements from Brady Commerce Park LLC in Warrensburg, Missouri. This is for adoption or rejection. Lund?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
Twenty-three, is an ordinance accepting sanitary sewer dedication from Brady Commerce Park LLC in Warrensburg, Missouri.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, again, it's a dedication of sanitary easement coming from the Commerce Park project into the Dollar Tree area, into their corner of their property. It's a square extension required for, for the purpose of supporting the Dollar Tree project as well as the development of the area to the east. Staff recommends approval as presented.
Move to pass that ordinance to second reading by title?
Lund?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
This is an ordinance accepting sanitary sewer dedication from Brady Commerce Park LLC in Warrensburg, Missouri. This is for adoption or rejection. Lund?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
Twenty-four, an ordinance accepting dedicated, dedication public easement to Veterans Road Extension Phase One from Gary A Baldwin and Lorraine F Baldwin and Roger C Baldwin and Connie E Baldwin of the city of Warrensburg, Missouri.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, again, another project we're doing, Veterans Road Phase One from existing Veterans Road into the Cahill subdivision. We have engineered, designed, and we're almost ready to do this project. Staff recommends approval as submitted.
Would just add, must it, the dedication of the right-of-way, they've also submitted annexation and zoning applications and petitions, so you will see those coming through probably in October.
Move said bill be passed the second reading by title.
Lund?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
This is an ordinance accepting dedication, public easement for Veterans Road Extension Phase One from Gary A Baldwin and Lorraine F Baldwin and Roger C Baldwin and Connie E Baldwin in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri. This is for adoption or rejection. Lund?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
Alright, twenty-five, an ordinance approving the filing of a tax lien on a property located at three eleven West North Street for the purpose of abating a public nuisance.
It's very rare, but from time to time, we are unable to locate an owner or a mortgage holder or bank that is willing to take responsibility for property. In this case, the owner had, was deceased and had not been able to find a contact to mow it yet this season. So, the city followed your local as well as state process for having it mowed and this will allow the city to place a lien on the property and recoup our costs for the mowing as well as for the filing fees and the staff time in processing that. Recommend approval of the ordinance.
No, move to approve.
Lund?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
This is an ordinance approving the filing of a tax lien on a property located at three eleven West North Street for the purpose of abating a public nuisance. This is for adoption or rejection. Lund?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
Alright, other businesses and appearances. Twenty-six, mayoral appointments to boards and commissions. The only thing I've got is Casey's going to be taking over for Johnson County Economic Development and to rob his spot. Other than that?
And Deanna, Weston Haver, would, she was going to serve as a PNC appointment.
Yes, I'm sorry.
And then also Danielle agreed to be on the WCVB.
That was already in place, but.
That's just renewal.
Can I make a motion to approve?
Lund?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Yes.
Appearances of the council not listed on the agenda. Okay, alright. Let's see, Miss Ladies Matters for the mayor and our city council. The only thing I got is, they said you hadn't received this yet, chief, so, but it looks like we got a letter from the president of the Warrensburg Wheels, William B, is that Cozad?
Cozad.
Cozad, okay. And I'm just going to read this, this is pretty nice though. Does the Warrensburg Police Department support Warrensburg Wheels Cruise Night for our twenty-ninth annual show? Went great. We had approximately sixty participant cars. Several cruisers said how much smoother the Friday night cruise of the Veterans Care Facility was with Warrensburg Police Intersection Control. I'm sure police officers and their performances or duties rarely get to thank you and smiles from the public. Also, the smiles care facility patrons showed that some of them were reliving, reliving a found car memory. That alone made the cruise work wild. Also, thanks, thanks goes to the fire department for their fire truck in the parade. Give that to you, share to your people. But yeah, that's, oh, that's great there. And then also, you said Leah? Leah Kempera?
Kemble.
Kemble, okay. From the UCM Education.
She's a senior journalism student.
I'm like, I can't read this.
UCM, you got that.
I got UCM.
It is hard to read.
So, this is your senior year out there, is it?
Yes, I'm the news editor at the Mail Spinner and I'm working on a news feed with the city and I look forward to meeting all of you individually and kind of talking to you, but yeah, I just wanted to get acquainted with my acquaintance with you guys and introduce myself and stuff.
I've been in your shoes. I have a journalism degree.
And I, I think I saw the Daily Star Journal was hiring? Thought I saw something in the classifieds there about looking for an editor or something of that sort? Oh, okay. Okay.
Good networking.
Don't wake him up quite so fast.
I was like, I remember seeing something in there. Alright, let's see here. City manager's report?
Just a few things this evening, I want to provide you an update. So, with some of the recent storms we've had, we did sustain some deterioration of damage to storm drainage on Monster Act Park Road and deemed it to be an emergency. So, we've been using the emergency clauses of our code to move forward with that. But at this point, we estimate repair costs about to be around seventy-one thousand dollars to fix that. And the staff is, we have a contract, we used the contract that we had approved before for emergency situations to help keep costs down and we are exercising that contract to repair this and get that road open as soon as possible to pull the traffic. The sidewalk had collapsed and the road is going to be next and it's been determined that it needed to be fixed. Also, we've been working diligently on, on our website, on launching a new website for the city and we do still anticipate a September first launch, so that would be Friday. So, we're doing a soft launch here and make sure everything's working properly and anything else and then we'll do some public relations, letting the public know that it's, it's there. But if you go to the city's website after Friday, it'll have a new look to it. And we also changed the address. It is now a dot gov address, instead of a dot com address. And we'll probably also follow suit with all of our email addresses. We'll switch those to a dot gov email address also. So, thank you to the staff for the hard work they've put into this. It's been months and we look forward to having that out and open. And finally, just an update, in a recent WCVB meeting, it was recommended from their board that we change, the board seats on that from nine to seven. So, the staff will be preparing that action necessary for council for the next council meeting.
And the money fed repairs, you know, come out of a fund? Another conversation.
We had some left of our money in our C I B fund that we'll be a fun part of it, but the, just a working process.
Okay.
This was essentially the same deal that occurred at Lake Ridge, inferior product.
Similar, only a little wider. It was slightly under the road. It was underneath the curb and probably a good three, four foot under the road.
Wow.
It was immediately shattered.
That is a bus route, too.
Major bus route.
Right. Good catch.
Well, there, it, we caught it on Friday and then, of course, I was tracking my days and nights, actually it deteriorated at the beginning with and then the following day is when it collapsed. It was after, we got about five inches away. So, that's what caused it to have deteriorated.
Right. Thank you.
Alright, Matthew, you're up.
Well, since the, since the first time, well, since we switched banks to equity, this is the first time since then that we've had seen interest rates rise above the interest rates we're receiving from equity. So, we'll, we'll be investing this week. That's exciting for me.
First time in a long time.
It's been, it's been a while. It's been over three years since we've had any sort of investments.
Wow.
But we got a good rate from our bank, so that, that took care of a lot of that. And then sales tax revenues are up again, so they're up about five percent over the last year this time and then another, another high for the month of August.
I saw that.
Yeah, highest month of August we have on record. Hopefully, one more of those and we'll at least break even maybe more than what we did last year, which was, what was budgeted.
With the actions tonight on those annexations, we can proceed with the MoDOT process for annexing. With the actions tonight on those annexations, we can proceed with the MoDOT process for annexing the Highway 18 right-of-way that I anticipate will take at least a couple of months. So it'll be a while before things come back to complete the end of the year on that piece.
But they'll still keep possession of that road, though, right?
Say what?
They'll still keep possession of the road, though.
Oh, yes. It'll still be there, they will own it, it would be part of their system, it would just be inside the corporate limits, same as Highway 50 is inside corporate limits, portions of the highway.
You got anything there, Bill?
We have a lot. We also have all the temporary construction easements, everything that took us past. So we're getting ready to put the sanitary sewer out to bid. It actually is going to advertise starting August 31st. And then the roadway, we finished up here pretty soon with the engineering. We just finalized the traffic study required for MoDOT. So we'll be addressing our issues with MoDOT, reference the break in access, and get through blessing, so to speak, and the road will follow as far as it's going out to bid. And of course, the Veterans Road, Veterans Road Phase One, excuse me. That is, that engineering has been completed, we're finalizing the bid packet on that. It will also have to bid this winter. I'm pretty sure I forgot a few, so we're talking about the roundabout and then also the traffic cycle. Upgrade projects are all in engine as we speak. And staff is still working with Walmart Corporate to hopefully work out a solution to their entryway problem there. We're trying to work with them to partner with us on that.
Got anything, Gary?
We're in the middle of our RFP for the network switch upgrade and honest big off wireless in the city, which we've never had. It'll be in about 15 locations or 16 locations around the city. So this would be a, basically a forklift to the entire backbone of the network. So it's a pretty, pretty big project. We had our first pre-bid meeting last Wednesday, we had four companies show up for that. I expect another good turnout for the next one on this Wednesday. So we're taking them around each location here and actually see each physical location for the wifi installs and all the network equipment where that will all be installed. So hopefully, that'll close out in the middle of September, and then we'll start working on deciding who we're going to go with. And hopefully, once all everything's budgeted, we'll be ready to roll the first part of this one here and get that project knocked out.
Now, would that be like a city hotspot, to where the public can connect to it, or is that?
There will be, it depends, there will be probably two networks available. One of those will be for city-owned IT equipment. But there will also be probably a more, I don't want to say public, basically, if you want to bring or connect your own device to it, kind of like what we do here, where you can connect up to that, that would be an internet-only route. So, but we would not broadcast that out publicly to where anybody could get on that. It would still generally be kind of for city business, but if you're using a non-city-owned asset.
Anything, Marcy?
Evening. Well, last time we met, we were talking about Eclipse, so we've been eclipsed. And so I'm just gonna highlight a little bit of what I learned. Glasses are hot commodities, and just that sunscreen is never a good idea. I met families from Arizona, Arkansas, and New York on Monday, the 21st. I visited a lot of the locations that are having different events. And then I did a recap. I did a recap from those locations, and then I also called all of our hotels and our bed breakfast. All of our hotels were booked Sunday and Monday, except for one. And they said they just had a handful of rooms on Sunday night and Monday night. Our bed breakfast, they did have reservations, but they weren't completely booked. All the events were highly, were heavily participated in. We estimated probably about 200 people participated in Highway 13, North Antique, St. Collectibles, which was really exciting, because I was out there about 11:30, and it was so cloudy, we weren't sure how it was going to work out. So we were really excited about that. And about 5 o'clock that Monday night, I helped a family from Arkansas get some T-shirts, because they wanted Eclipse, Warrensburg Eclipse T-shirts. And they weren't leaving town until they got them. So I stayed on the phone, and I was on the phone with Lori, who was running out of Highway 13, and we got them out there and we got the T-shirts. So that was really exciting. So real quickly, I just want to say thank you. Last week was my first official month, and the city staff has been incredible to work with. They've been very patient with me. Yes, I've been with the city before, but things change. A lot has changed, and they've been very patient with me, guiding me, and it's in a different position. I just want to say thank you.
Danielle?
I also want to send out some thanks for our staff and to the council also for helping with Klein last week, especially Jess, my Klein classmate, Casey Watts, for taking the lead as I worked on the packet last Thursday while they were touring some of the local government businesses or entities. But, and they will still have another day when they'll go to police department and fire department. So, but they covered everything else, and that is all.
Greg?
Could be one that says nothing.
Nope.
Just gonna pass.
All right, Doty?
Well, we had an amazing doggy day, thanks to your backs, you know, and we really appreciate the support that you've given us. And, you know, I think it's their largest, we had over 150 dogs, and I'm sure about 300 participants. There's usually always two that bring one dog, and so it was a great event, very positive. And thank you, Brian, for your support in that. We also are going to be turning 20, the community center, in October. And so September, the 25th through the 29th, we're going to have an event every day, something exciting for people to participate in the community center. We're going to bring back 20 years and also look forward to 20 years. So should be a fun event, we'll be putting more information out as soon on that. So thank you.
Anything?
We were in the break, but we already covered that one. We also went to Sedalia to help a fundraising effort for the police officer who was killed in the flood. They were well appreciative of it. We also are assembling the new truck and getting the equipment put on it and taking care of it, get it going.
All right. We had an interesting call for service this morning. As you all know, this is, we're painting the town red right now, and Chamber has some red and black flags that people can buy and hang up. And so we had a call this morning that there was an Antifa, Antifa? Is that how you say it? I don't know. Anti-fascist flag hanging up on Russell Road.
All right.
I didn't know there was such a thing. This is what it looks like. The difference is, the red and black is diagonal across the flag, the ones that the Chamber is selling are not that way. So this person was concerned that somebody was flying an Antifa flag in our community. We responded, the officer, the way the flag was, it was on a flag holder, but the flag holder was attached to a utility pole that's right next to the road. And so he didn't know whether it belonged to the business or somebody just put it up, so he removed it temporarily and then realized that it belonged to the business that's right behind where the flag was displayed. And it was their flag that they put up to show their UCM spirit. So if you hear that being talked about around town, we're gonna, Suzanne and I visited, and we're gonna put some on our Facebook page to let people know the anti-fascists are not in town, we're just showing our UCM spirit. So that was rather interesting. I'm sure you'll read about that on Facebook somewhere.
Thank you.
And I, you know, I know you guys have seen it, but I mean, it's kind of been the talk of the town. The D.Sawyer, who's one of my desk clerks, came to me just before school started, and she's been working on our Facebook page, and she reads a lot of other departments' Facebook's page, and the Lawrence Police Department makes her laugh every day. So she, her goal is to be better than Lawrence. And while Harold and I will both agree that Lawrence is fantastic, we know Warrensburg can be better. So she's been working on that, and we've gained about 3,000 now new followers in the last couple of weeks. And it's all stuff you can't make up. Stuff that really happens.
I've heard it.
People are using the jet wagon.
So it's been fun. People are always asking about it. And then finally, the fifth, the Day of Labor Day, we're going to be swearing in another new police officer. It seems like I'm telling you this almost every meeting. We're really excited, especially about this guy, because his last name is Police. Pronounces it Polis. So we're gonna swear in Jairree Polis at 4 o'clock on Tuesday. I hear the council chambers, we'd love to have all of you guys here to be there, showing your support. This one, I can't tell you specifically, but I can just tell you that it's going to be very special. So if you can all be here, be here, because it's going to be really cool, so I'm excited.
You said 4 o'clock?
4 o'clock on the fifth. That's all I have, thank you.
Tracy?
Facebook posts are definitely hilarious, so I've reached out to many other police departments in Bangor, Maine. I didn't know about Lawrence, so I very much enjoyed the humor. I thought, I assumed it was you.
My kids say it's great.
Really, that's all I have.
They love it.
That was actually what I had written down, too. I'm a millennial, so I consider myself a social media expert, like most people my age. So yeah, I, I think that the great part is, you're actually putting a personality to the page, which is garnering community support for the officers, and they need that. And that will, in turn, create community protection for them.
We have high school kids reading that, so now.
My dad lives in Seattle, and he's reading it.
When we have important things put out there, we'll have an audience, so thank you.
Yeah, and I've been calling my kids jack wagons for a week, so.
You got anything, Dan, or about?
No, no, I don't, thank you.
We're happy that Bob was able to make it to the meeting tonight.
Yes, it's a surprise.
New knees are a lot of fun. Especially when it's a second go-around.
Well, Brian and I might know this, but Thursday, August 31st, is your second year of being here. Good job.
It's been a pleasure, it's been a lot of fun.
I think some of the juice we served at your reception center, I just saw it today. I thought, oh, I better get that out of here. I just saw it today.
Well, I personally have enjoyed it here, so I'll have a couple more years.
It's been blessed.
Yeah, that's all I have.
Do you have anything?
Oh, the M and L. Did you all get the agenda with the upcoming M and L? Okay.
Was anybody gonna go to that? I don't know.
Even though I'd like to go to the lake, I just, I told that vehicle.
Remind me tomorrow, send me an email and remind me again.
Okay, yeah.
I forgot to check today.
Okay.
Only I'll say is that my 15-year-old actually brought it to me and goes, "Did you read this yet?" Like, of course I did. But, but yeah, when the high school students are reading it and talking about it, that's definitely a major plug. All right, I think we just, we need to go back into closed session, correct?
Should we move to close?
Yeah, move to close.
Vote to close part of this meeting pursuant to Section 610.021 of the Revised Statutes of Missouri relating to two legal actions, causes of action or litigation involving the city in any confidential or privileged communication between the city and its representatives and its attorneys; two, leasing, purchase, or sale of real estate where public knowledge might adversely affect the amount paid in the transaction; three, hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting of particular employees by a public governmental body when personal information about the employee is discussed or recorded; twelve, documents or any documents related to a negotiated contract until a contract is executed or all proposals are rejected; thirteen, individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employees for applicants for employment.
Lund?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
I know.
Oh, okay, well, I'm gonna have to take some other stuff down.
All right, Ryan, here's a big question. We're good.
Okay.
I got like three of them. We had our 15 annexing and blah, blah, blah.
That's good. He's almost as cute as mine.
We actually annexed everything from basically Cahill.
He's got more hair than mine.
And two rare Dollar Trees.
And what's your brother?
You feeling all right?
Well, we had an order to do the annexation.
You're not having the same one. You're having a different, you had a different one. It's the same one?
And they had to take the old one out.
They're moving, they're building.
But it was 25 years old.
Oh, okay. I have a brother that's hard to picture.
I respect the cleat.
Have you heard that? He's pretty good.